America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
As a reminder, we are recording this session on Zoom and cable is also transmitting and saving a copy on YouTube for anything else. If anybody is recording, please let us know. Once you want to talk or you want to speak, say your name and where you're from. We're going to start with our police monthly report.
You got it. Chief LeLan, Warren PD. So for the month of April, Warren PD logged 1,279 calls to service, arrested four felonies, had 63 incident reports, three on view arrests, two warrant arrests, 25 sentence arrests, a total of 30, three protective custody's, two juvenile arrests, 211 motor vehicle stops with 125 sentences. For the month, on the second, Officer Williams and I went up to the elementary school. We played football with the fifth grade class at recess. And then later that same day, I attended my monthly homeland security meeting. On the third, I attended the Central Mass Chiefs meeting and training. That meeting, we discussed several ballot changes. We also had a presentation by the MPTC director. They're actually going to be closing the Boylston Academy and they're building a brand new facility in Marlborough that should be opened at the end of next year, he said. On the fourth, I attended a site visit at the town's levee at the Wright's Mill complex. There, we spoke with a company about inspecting the floodgates. On the 10th, Town Administrator Jim Ferrara, Chief LeBoy, and I attended an injured on duty seminar put on by our insurer Meyer in North Hampton. The 12th, all police and fire personnel were invited to a luncheon at Quaylog High School for a thank you to public safety. And then on the 20th, the town did a townwide cleanup. I participated in. Superintendent Duff and I, we cleaned the roadways around the school. On the 24th, all members of the school's safety committee, we met at the high school for a monthly meeting, and we discussed some changes that we were making to the plan and was voted unanimously. On the 25th, I had the pleasure of attending the elementary school's community reading day. I read the book Papa's Mechanical Fish to Mrs. Renaud's fourth grade classroom. And finally, on the 30th, I attended a quarterly dispatch meeting that was held at Barry PD for all the police departments in the RRECC. We discussed a couple of policies, things that we wanted to make changes of with the director from the RACC, Mike Moriarty, and those changes were approved.
Thank you, Chief.
You got it.
Any questions?
No.
Good job.
Good job, chief.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
We're going to move to a discussion and possible vote to appoint the following individuals, a special traffic constable for a one-year term. Vote anticipated.
Okay. I'll make a motion to appoint James Gagnor as special traffic constable for a term of one year. We have to do these individually?
Yeah. Second?
All in favor?
David Dufrain, aye.
Richai Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye. Motion approved.
I make a motion to appoint Kenneth Poploski as special traffic constable for a one-year term.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufrain, aye.
Richai Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye. Motion approved.
I make a motion to appoint Harold William Ramsey as special traffic constable for a one-year term.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufrain, aye.
Richai Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye. Motion approved.
You good? Discussion and possible vote to appoint and enter into a three-year employment agreement with Kyle P. Whitcomb for the position of police lieutenant. Anticipated vote.
So today, I bring to you, in front of you, Kyle Wickham. He is a sergeant from Ware PD. Obviously, we know Lieutenant Early's leaving us for retirement. Mr. Ferrera, Chief Haglin from West Portfield, Chief LeBoy and I conducted interviews for the lieutenant's position. And we're putting in front of you today, from the board members, Sergeant Whitcomb from Ware. He does come with us from vast knowledge. He was a great detective. We worked with him several times here in Warren with a lot of drug work that he did. He was a great detective, moved on to sergeant in Ware, has a lot of trainings, and I think he'd be a great fit here at Warren.
Any questions? You want to introduce yourself?
Sure. So my name's Kyle Wickham. As the chief previously stated, I've been a police officer in the town of Ware for about eight years. I'm actually a resident here in town. And, you know, definitely looking forward to this opportunity. I appreciate it. And, you know, hopefully, I can, you know, assist this PD in continuing to be effective and protect the towns here and protect the town citizens here.
Glad to add that. Forgot about being the resident of town. I wanted to say that.
They're very good. Live in town, work in town.
That's right.
Perfect. Any questions?
No.
Questions?
No.
Mr. Ferrera?
No.
I make a motion to appoint and enter into a three-year employment agreement with Kyle P. Whitcomb for the position of police lieutenant.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufrain, aye.
Richai Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye. Congratulations, sir. Welcome.
Welcome to the team. All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. All right, absolutely. Thank you very much. Perfect.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have the appointment form?
No. I don't have the appointment for him.
Just remember, he has to get sworn in. So Monday, we'll be all set to go sign it.
We need to, you know, we got to have him sign the appointments tonight.
Well, no, these guys have to sign it.
Yes.
So just pick it up in my office Monday morning.
You got it.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thanks.
Have a good one.
I have the appointments for the constables.
Oh, we have to do that anyway, right?
There's three of them.
Okay, so we've reordered things and going back to record one. One. So have a discussion and possible vote on an application for Class II motor vehicle license for Next Gen Parts Place LLC located at 764 Main Street, Warren. Anticipated vote. You guys are here? You want to introduce yourselves?
I'm Josh.
I'm John.
Do you guys want to present anything, say anything? What are you guys doing there? What's your intent with the property? You got Spencer's now, right?
Spencer, yes. This is Jeff Spencer.
Yeah. So you bought that property and what do you intend to do there?
Hey, I'm like, just sell parts, basically.
Yeah, we buy cars, sell parts, e-commerce online.
Mostly e-commerce.
Yeah. So we basically store parts there and then ship parts out of there.
Okay. You know, you can't have, like, junk cars on the property, right? Okay, this is just for parts?
Yeah, we disassemble indoors.
Yeah, we do full indoor disassembly, no outdoor disassembly, no outdoor, stuff like that.
Not storing anything outside?
No.
No.
It won't be like a junkyard. That's where you work.
Yeah.
We don't allow those in town.
We're a very clean operation.
Very clean. Everything's stored inside, no outdoors, anything. We do high-end stuff, no, like, old stuff. It's all newer American performance vehicles and stuff like that.
Corvettes, Camaros, Mustangs.
Yeah, stuff like that. And we do all, like, 2020s, and stuff like that, not, not like old raggedy junk and stuff like that.
I think it's time for me to change the Bronco for a Corvette.
You can build one at our place. We've got plenty of parts.
There you go. Can you make it yellow?
Yeah. I've got plenty of yellow.
So are you going to have a retail operator, like a counter?
We do do retail also.
Okay, so people can go and...
I'd say probably 5% is retail. 5% is walk-in, 95% is e-commerce.
We have very low foot traffic. We push our eBay mainly, shipping and stuff like that.
But you will have a storefront there, right?
Correct. Yeah.
What's your timeline? What do you think is your timeline?
As far as...
Like having up and running?
Probably moving for a couple of months.
Yeah, I mean...
We have a lot of parts to move from Spencer to Warren.
And you'll start in the fall?
Yeah. I would say, like, full turn operation by the start of the year. Yeah. I mean, sooner the better, but we definitely want to do a lot of upgrades and cleaning and stuff like that before we even start.
There's a group of guys, very nice fellows, that they meet very regularly with, you know, with classic cars and everything, just, you know, nearby you guys.
The Truck?
No.
The War Truck?
No, it's a, you can't say the name right now, but it is the Warren Truck Company, what's the name of that?
Oh, War Truck.
Yeah. They meet over there. They have...
What's the car show or something?
They meet, they have meets, and, you know, everybody goes with their car, they show off and...
We'd like to have a car show, like, once a year, maybe.
Oh, we'll love that.
Because we got some parking across the street there.
You know, and on Memorial Day, we're looking at, you know, making it bigger, so, you know, maybe have some parks.
Yeah, that's to be incorporated in that.
We're talking. Okay, good. Sounds great.
We do a lot with events and, yeah, stuff like that, fundraisers. And with us doing these cool, like, performance vehicles, we attract, like, big social media people and stuff like that that we work with and stuff. So that's, that's pretty cool. We get to travel, go to a lot of stuff.
Excellent. What are your hours of operation?
Eight to five.
Yeah, that's nine to five more. So, yeah.
We have the hours on it?
Pretty regular hours.
Well, like, I don't know. I'll come back.
Well, because you're going to have these UPS guys.
Yeah, UPS. They take up at 3:00 typically.
UPS and they do a lot of postal service.
Your secretary says hours on you.
Do we want to approve this contingent to hours? You know, if we want operating at midnight or anything like that.
Yeah, I mean, we're, like, super quiet people, like, yeah, I, our shop...
We just want to make sure that, you know, when we say, you know, keeping up the neighbors, it's a quiet shop, but...
No, yeah, I'm cool with agreeing on something now.
Believe me, I don't want to work past 6:00.
Yeah.
So it works out for you, so nobody can say, why don't you open up at 8:00 at night, you know? Well, the town won't let me.
I mean, we've generally, as far as customer sake, is nine to five, and then eight to one on Saturday, no Sunday. That's generally been, like, you say, what hours you open.
It's like the car guy.
Yeah, that is, that's what we say.
Nine to eight. I'm good with that.
We just want to put it on the...
I don't know where you want to put it.
You just add it underneath the...
Can we just do eight to six to be safe, or?
Yeah.
Right here?
Because some days we wait till six, but...
I'm okay with eight to six.
Yeah, that's fine.
Eight to six, and then you through Friday.
Saturdays, Saturday, nine to...
Eight to, eight to one?
Eight to one. So you can put that on the license?
Yeah.
I will. I'll put it on the license. And I'm sorry, Saturday is what?
Eight to one.
And Sunday?
We don't do Sundays.
I'll put that on your license.
No Sundays, no holidays.
I like you guys. We don't want to.
You don't take little vacations, that's the point.
Where do you...
But you guys are owners.
Yeah. We've been abusing that for years, working holidays there and nights. And so those are less hours than what we've had. So I'm sure the neighbors would be pretty happy.
We're going to keep the neighbors happy, too.
We like to get along with everyone. I'm not worried about that.
You guys seem like good guys.
Yeah.
Another question for you. So the repair plate, how does that work? They have...
What do you question?
Spencer has a repair plate now. How would we get that to transfer over to us?
You wouldn't, you wouldn't get it transferred over. You'd have to apply it through the state.
So that's through the state now?
Yeah.
Nothing to do with you guys, just the dealer license.
So once you get your dealer's license, then you'd have to apply through the state.
Our registry.
Good, good. All right. Do we need to have you both? This is very, very good. Could you please do an option, right? Anybody in the public? Zoom. Everybody quiet. Okay?
I'll make a motion to approve the application for a Class II motor vehicle license for Next Gen Parts Place LLC as amended.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufrain, aye.
Richai Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
I just want to point out, it is N-E-X Gen, not N-E-X T Gen, right?
It's Next Gen.
N-E-X T G E N.
N-E-X T G E, oh, this letter says. Okay, all right. It's N-E-X T?
Yep. N-E-X T G E N.
So you're saying Next Gen?
Yes.
Okay.
The letter is Next Generation, right?
That's the letter.
Basically.
That's the letter from...
We started the other business 10 years ago, and that's what we came up with.
Did we miss, did you mistype it?
I don't think I did.
The building inspector made me correct one.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Good.
Good luck.
I'll have your license for your company here.
Yeah, welcome to town.
Thank you. Now, we're very excited to...
Awesome. You're welcome to stay if you don't want to be...
Believe me, we'll be an asset to this town, and we're going to work with the town.
There's a lot of car guys in town.
Hopefully, we'll help the community and we'll do some events and whatever.
A blue collar town, so you'll probably have a lot of people, more people than you think, walking in there looking for parts, so...
Yeah. We like to be involved, so I think it'll be good. We have cool stuff, so.
Very good. We're sorry to see Spencer's go, though.
Yeah, I am, too.
You had a great run.
Yeah, sure.
When did Spencer's open?
Well, my grandfather started that in, like, 1926.
Wow, really?
Yeah.
Selling Fords, right?
Yeah, I was originally a Fordson dealer and got Plymouth De Soto in the 40s, so... But I've been, I've been working there for 54 years myself, so that's third generation, so I've been there a long time.
Did you start working there when you were two?
I'll be 68 this month, so I've been there since I was 14.
So Florida, by one view now, right?
No.
No?
It's too nice around here. We don't have tornadoes and a little bit of flooding, but other than that...
Well, we're trying to take care of those beavers. Well, thank you very much. Thank you for everything you've done for the town over the years. We really appreciate it.
Certainly been good, you know, been a good community, so...
We're going to keep it that way.
It's a good neighborhood. They'll get to know the guys in the neighborhood, so...
And they're still going to be around. They'll be in and out every day. All right. Appreciate it, guys.
Thank you very much.
Next, review and possible vote on a contract extension from June 30, 2024, to September 30, 2024, between Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission and the town for its fiscal year 2021, Massachusetts Community Development Fund Program Administration Services. Anticipated vote.
I'm good. Yeah. I'm good. I'll make a motion to approve the extension from June 30, 2024, to September 30, 2024, between Central Mass Regional Planning Commission and the town for its fiscal year 2021, Mass Community Development Fund Program, Administration Services.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufrain, aye.
Richai Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
Don't worry, she didn't get me with the front.
Mr. Chairman, if we could table item number five for this meeting?
Next, review and discuss possible signing, a purchase and sales agreement between the town and Nicholas Warren for the purchase of a parcel of land with all improvements thereon, located at 947 Main Street, Warren, being accessories parcel, map 240231, as described in the deed recorded with the Worcester South Registry of deeds in Book 65161, page 106. Anticipated vote.
General Listen, no?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the board. Thank you both. So the town has been in contact with the owner of 947 Main Street, which is the old train depot in town. And the Parks Department at some point had indicated that they would really like to see that parcel be utilized for park purposes and for events in town, and to coincide with the redevelopment and the redesign of our town common project, which has been talked about at our CDBAC meetings that we have. So I was charged with and asked to reach out to the owner to see if it was, if it was being listed. At one point, it was listed. When I initially contacted the owner, Nick Cat, back in April, he had indicated to me that the listing had just expired. And so I went into negotiations with him in good faith to try to determine a price for the parcel. We had a oral agreement of $250,000. I worked with town council to address a purchase and sales agreement and have it drafted. We do have it right here. I forwarded it to Mr. Cat earlier this week for his review and ultimate signature. And I received a phone call today at about 2:30, 3:00, from an Amanda Pierce, who is claiming to be Nick Cat's realtor. And I was taken by surprise by the call, as I was under the impression, and Nick had told me, that the, that the listing had expired. She said the listing is still active. She's had the listing for approximately a year and a half. I said, I even thought that the sign was down at some point, but I guess the sign is back up, so she claims. And she had indicated that she had received, you know, offers much higher than the 250. That was negotiated orally between Nick and myself. And, you know, the price, the listing price is 299. And I said, so the oral agreement and the good faith effort that we had put into this, was, you know, going back and forth with Mr. Cat, is that off the table, Amanda? And she said yes. I had subsequently, prior to this call from Amanda, had tried to reach Mr. Cat by his cell phone, text messages. I was unsuccessful. He hasn't returned my calls. I had town council reach out to him, Katie Klein, our lawyer, reach out to him. As of 4:00 today, she did not hear back from him either. So unfortunately, at this particular juncture...
So, yeah, you, go ahead. You had to tell me more about this, Amanda. So with this particular situation, we had a oral agreement with the owner of the property, this Amanda that's coming in after the fact of us negotiating an agreement with the owner. I think that's between her and the owner of the property. We've already negotiated an oral agreement with the owner, and I think we should proceed with that. We can, if you guys are good, we can approve the, the contract and just move forward with that. And if he doesn't want to move forward with it, then have legal address it. But she's, she's not even in the picture. He said she wasn't in the picture. And for her to inject in there now, I think is after the fact. I think she knows that there's a seal potentially going to happen, if everything goes right at, you know, the annual town meeting. But right now, I wouldn't really take too much to what she says in there, because we've negotiated in good faith with the owner.
Yes.
So to follow up to that, and then those are great points. Town council has indicated that if we don't have, you know, both parties signed, okay, we shouldn't sign at this, at this juncture. You know, it was our goal to have it signed right now by Nick. They recommend not signing it, just in anticipation if he does change his mind. We could potentially also put this on for the 6:00 prior meeting to the special and annual town meeting. If Nick happens to change his mind and wants to sign the agreement, then, then the board could sign it at 6:00 in anticipation of the annual and special town meeting. And, you know, you could go into the meeting with a signed agreement. But the article also does indicate that if the town wanted to, they could also explore or request to do an eminent domain taking. Eminent domain takings are very tricky, and, you know, there is a little bit of risk there for the town. And what I mean by risk is that, you know, if you, once you do an eminent domain proceeding, you will have to get a, an appraisal done. If the appraisal comes back at, you know, 225,000, and at the town meeting, you only allocated 200,000, you would have to go back to town meeting to get the other 25. However, if the appraisal comes back at, at, at two and a quarter, and Mr. Cat is somehow able to get an appraisal completed at three and a quarter, okay, then it would go to court, and both parties would have to pay legal expenses, and then a judge would make a determination. And usually...
And usually, on where the risk is, is that if somebody was to get a substantially higher evaluation, the judge tends to go within the middle. So again, the town could potentially pay a little bit more for the property plus be out legal costs. So that is the risk. I just wanted the board to be clear on what exactly that is all about, along with any, you know, you would have to pay for the appraisal upfront. Mr. Cat would also have to pay for the appraisal as well for his side. He would have to pay his own legal expenses. We would have to pay our own legal expenses. But that is, you know, a potential option. The town would get ultimate control of the property relatively quickly. And then, you know, if it's a contested taking, then it would go to court and the court would make a determination on the money factor. But the town would still have rights to the property, you know, relatively quickly.
So I'm good with that because, you know, let's try to go with the agreement. I think the best opportunity would be to go with the agreement that we have. Again, he agreed to it. We have an oral agreement. For him to go back on that kind of shows that there's not good faith there. And I think we would have a good argument. If we had to go to court, that we've already entered into an agreement and, you know, that we're drawn on his behalf or on his realtor's behalf. And if we have to do eminent domain, so be it. You know, it's, the building has a unique value to the community. And the Parks Department, they could utilize that building for many things. And I think it would be a great addition to renovate in that downtown. So, I'm good with whatever we have to do to get the building.
I agree with you, David.
Yeah, I'm good with it too. Again, I think that, you know, going with the agreement is the best way, but, you know.
So I would recommend that the board hold off on signing anything and we can sign it that night with Jeff there if he has, we can have this added to the agenda that night in case he does. If for some reason he doesn't come town meeting time, then, you know, a motion could be read for eminent domain taking. And I would recommend that it follows suit with the same exact.
The 250.
Right number.
Yeah. I'm good with it.
Do we need to?
We're gonna table it down? Table it down?
Nothing to decide on.
You're right.
Okay. We table this? Next, we have line item transfer requests from the assessor's office, anticipated vote.
I'll make a motion to approve the line item transfer request from the line item assessor's clerk. Salary to the assessor purchased services in the amount of $3,000. Make a motion to approve. That's the second one, huh? So I'll do my first motion.
Okay, any second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufreny.
Which I have her eye.
Deli Bellis eye. Motion approved.
And make a motion to approve the line item transfer for the, in the amount of $2,300 from the assessor's clerk's salary to the assessor mapping.
You have any second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufreny.
Which I have her eye.
Deli Bellis eye. Motion approved.
I will also say, Mr. Chairman, that these items have not been voted on by the Finance Committee yet. Finance Committee is planning to meet on the 17th. This is just to expedite things a little bit quickly into accommodate scheduling of the Finance Committee meeting and your meetings.
Good work. Next, we have a line item transfer for the building department, anticipated vote.
Make a motion to approve the line item transfer for the building department from the line item facilities custodian salary to the building inspector in the amount of $3,000.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufreny.
Which I have her eye.
Deli Bellis eye. Motion approved. Next, line item transfer for the fire department, anticipated vote.
I make a motion to approve the line item transfer from the fire department from the line item ambulance training payroll to advanced life support in the amount of $3,000.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufreny.
Which I have her eye.
Deli Bellis eye. Motion approved. Next, we have the warnings and bills.
I'll make a motion to pay the following warrants. Number 75 payroll, $49,592.92. Number 76 vendor, $38,607.87. Number 77 payroll, $58,940.60. Number 78 vendor, $218,275.35.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufreny.
Which I have her eye.
Deli Bellis eye. And bills next?
Make a motion to pay Turley in the amount of $300.48. Northeast IT in the amount of $3,364. Merrick O'Connell in the total amount of $4,570.43. Pride Cleaning in the total amount of $2,223.90. New System Associates in the amount of $3,644.22. Verizon for $142.86. C2MA Adams in the total amount of $2,548.12. Buffoon Cleaning Services in the amount of $1,075. Marlin Leasing in the amount of $1,107.23. Weston and Sanson in the total amount of $8,000. And Comcast in the amount of $20.78.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufreny.
Which I have her eye.
Deli Bellis eye. Motion passed. Next, we have the minutes, review and possible acceptance of any minutes, anticipated vote.
Make a motion to approve the following minutes for meetings held on May 23, 2024, and May 24, 2024.
Second. So we have a second. All in favor?
David Dufreny.
Which I have her eye.
Deli Bellis eye. Minutes approved. Next, it's our wonderful Town Administrator Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have a couple things I'd like to touch upon for tonight's meeting. This week, we have continued on with our employee evaluation process. We are currently, we finished the entire sewer department this week. Finished the town clerk's office this week. We have evaluations continuing on next week and the week after. So progress has been going well and has been smoothly progressing. This week, or I should say last week, we had Pride Cleaning Services come into the building. We had some additional funds available during our maintenance line, improvement line and Shepherd Improvement Line to take care of some of the rug cleaning. So we cleaned the rugs in the FinCom, the Accountants Office, Building and Planning, my office. Those all got cleaned with some additional funds, as well as rugs at the PD were cleaned within the budget of the maintenance of town hall. It was also waxed, the floors were stripped and waxed at the PD as well. They were requested by the chief. So those cleaning items were taken care of. NSA Door, you may recall, David just read a bill for them. That is to take care of the mechanisms in front of the town hall off, in front of town hall, the main doors into the town hall. Those mechanisms were completely worn and not working. They were so bad that the chief had to have a zip tie to those doors to keep them shut and permanently shut. That is obviously a significant fire hazard, having a metal zip tie there. So we were able to take, get rid of the mechanisms, put all new mechanisms and devices. The doors now closed properly. They are now properly keyed. It is, has been replaced. It is a company that has done most of our door work since I've started here at least, NSA Door. And they were very reasonable in accommodating to get that door done for us. So that has been taken care of. That was also noted on one of the deficiencies by one of the reports that was issued of town hall. So that has been taken care of. The phones are here. The phones, the Verizon one talk phones are here. They're in my office. They're all in packages. There's about 20 different boxes up there, 19 boxes of the phones. Masters and Verizon will be out on the week of the 17th to unpackage them, set them up, go through a tutorial on them, get them ready to roll so that on the 24th, when people come back, it will be a smooth, seamless transition so that people can use the new phone systems. So they are here. The project that we've been working on on School Street, Oda Street, Hillside Street in Warren is started. We do ask all residents to have some patience. You know, pardon our dust up there, no pun intended, but we do have a significant amount of construction vehicles up there going on School Street, Oda Street, Hillside, all those areas. Please be cognizant of the construction that's going on up there. We are addressing it. We have notices that have gone out. CMRPC, our planning partner, personally went out there to, you know, deliver messages to all of the homes that are directly abutting the project. We do also have a project timeline and impact posted on our website, as well as contact information for any complaints or concerns that you may have. We are also going to be posting on a weekly basis updates of the project on the website, on the town's website. So our clerk of the works that is monitoring the project will be sending updates to CMRPC, which will be sending them to me, which I'll be sending them to Karen, and she will be putting them on to the website for the public to see, to get the updates on, on a weekly basis. So if you want to see some updates during the week of that particular project, Phase 2 of School Street, please go to the Town of Warren's website. Right on the homepage, there'll be a link there where you can see it. We are having a resident meeting, a public meeting for residents for that area that live there on June 12 at 4:00 p.m. And that's going to be at the intersection of School Street and Richardson Street. So we welcome any residents that may have some concerns. We're gonna, I'm gonna have the project manager there, the project engineer, Central Mass Regional Planning Commission representatives, our highway department, Jeremy Olson. If they have any questions or concerns, we're gonna have an opportunity to address that for a public meeting out there onsite. So that will be onsite at the intersection of School and Richardson Street.
That's at 4:00 p.m.?
4:00 p.m., sir. So we will be having that. I know that there has been some concerns up there. We're addressing all of the matters, all of the concerns. And we're trying to get that rectified as quickly as possible so that's less impact to the residents up there. So please, I think we can do this because we're all gonna enjoy a beautiful project at the end that will be nice once it's all completed. I have been working on year-end closeouts with grants, okay? If departments have grants, we send them out. Year-end closeouts with grants are happening this month. I just closed up the park grant. I'm working on our One Stop Award for fiscal year '23, '24. You know, that award has got to get closed out. Or possibly, I may be seeking an extension on that just because they have some modifications that they would like to address on the School Street patch that's in the road at the end of School Street, right there on 67. DOT has requested that the town repave that particular patch. However, the contractor has applied for the permit and DOT hasn't issued the permit yet. So we may need some additional time. And CMRPC has requested an extension. So I will try to see if I can get an extension from the state, on the state side, from our One Stop Grant for fiscal year '23. I'm gonna ask for an extension up until December 31 of this year to see if we can get that extension. We are doing some line item transfer requests as the board has approved. There were six, a total of six before you, much less than what we've had in the past, okay? What we had in the past, we've had, you know, in the 30s to the high 20 marks for line item transfer requests. And that's because of the hard work of all the departments, really is. Everybody that has pitched in, in cognizance of their budget and watching. We're trying to keep that number down as low as possible. You know, the six do include two ones that haven't been before you yet. So just because at the next meeting you will be seeing two additional ones, that's included in the six. So there's a potential one, a small one for the senior center for a few hundred dollars. And then one for the Board of Selectmen for legal, for additional legal costs that we're looking to close out some of the legal bills that we have with ongoing litigation with ASD, ZPT, and Copart. So we're looking to close those ongoing cases out as quickly as we can. So that is my report for this week. I do have another grant opportunity that came across the desk that I'm really interested in and looking to apply. That's the Massachusetts Technology Collaborative Grant that came out. The application is due July 1st. I'm really looking at it. What caught my eye is it's for cyber. It's up to $25,000. And I asked the question, if by any chance, would a, would it cover the cost of older computer terminals that may have risk of cyber issues because of cybersecurity, because they're older models? And if we get those identified by our IT provider, could they be replaced with the grant? And they said yes. So there's a possibility that the article that we have on for town meeting for $25,000 to start the replacement of our computers, there's a possibility that maybe I could supplement it with this grant if we were successful and if it was approved. We'll still go for the $25,000 at town meeting, but it's always nice to say, you know, at the fall town meeting, hey, we didn't need it, we got a grant, and so we're gonna roll that money back into another project somewhere down the road. So I'm gonna work on, I'm trying to get this application out. It's a very busy time of the year right now. We got town meeting next week. A reminder to all residents, town meetings next week at 6:30 with the special, 7 o'clock at the annual. Very busy time for all the departments, which is closing out the year end with the accounting, the financial team, with the town clerk's office getting ready for the annual town meeting. So it's a very busy time, but it's my goal to get this application in so that we have a potential of getting that. I do also want to report to the board that I did work with CMRPC this past week and we submitted for two projects for next year's One Stop for Growth. One is the Plasky Street design for Plasky Street so that we could, you know, start getting funds to redesign and upgrade the infrastructure on Plasky Street. And the other is for the bylaw update, for our bylaws, for zoning bylaw update.
Comprehensive review?
Yeah, the comprehensive review for zoning bylaws. So we applied for those officially on Monday and those have been submitted to the state.
Thank you very much. I hope you have any questions?
Any questions? Comments? Good job.
Thank you.
New business?
So I do have a new update regarding the permit we just approved for the Class Two license. A resident just sent me a message saying that the Class Two does not cover parts. It only covers the seal, the purchase and reseal of used units. It does not cover the parts part. So we have to look into that for the Class Two license if we actually gave him the license that he needs. So if we can look into that.
I guess who determined it was Class Two?
Well, that's what he applied for. Yeah. He actually sent me what the law was.
But they're a different business than Spencer, so.
Right. Spencer didn't deal with parts, they dealt with cars.
Yeah, I mean, they would have had parts, but their primary business was obviously.
Nope. Class Two allows for the purchase of second-hand motor vehicles.
Yep. Class Three allows for the purchase of second-hand motor vehicles and the purpose of remodeling, taking parts, taking apart or rebuilding and selling the parts of second-hand motor vehicles. So who did that Class Three license? Class Three, I think, is a junkyard.
No, it can be a junkyard. It doesn't necessarily is a junkyard.
We could put on the license that it's not, there's no storage of vehicles.
Yeah.
But where is he storing all the frames? Is he just taking one car in there at a time?
He said he was gonna disassemble indoors.
And then they stock the parts.
They stock the parts, and whatever is left, it's gone.
So it'd be a Class Three. Class Two would not be the one. Well, I believe, is that what he applied for, or did we tell him what to apply for?
I told him what to, because that's what Spencer applied for, to do the same thing. Spencer used to be a Class One, and then he applied for a Class Two. And so he bought Spencer's and he just said, okay, I'll do a Class Two, because that's what they did, not knowing the difference.
He's the one that should be directing us what he wants.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just want him to know he can't do what he thinks he can do because the license.
We need to redo that to a Class Three.
Yep. Yeah, yeah.
I will, I'll follow through.
Sorry. Residents making sure we do the right things.
Yeah.
Very good.
I'll call him tomorrow. Any more new business? Old business?
I did talk with the Carpenters Union, Mr. Eric Stevens. We are trying to arrange a walkthrough on those projects. He's been very busy, but he's aware of what we.
Awesome. Very good. Any more business?
No, I don't think so.
Any correspondence?
U S Small Business Administration fact sheet?
Yeah. Mister Ferrara asked you to put it on.
Yes, so we received this from the S B A, Small Business Administration. This is for impact of the severe storms. If anybody was severely impacted for the storms that occurred September eleventh through the thirteenth of twenty-twenty-three, there is an application that can be filed with the Small Business Administration to seeking disaster assistance and relief in the form of loans. Application filing deadline is July fifteenth of this year, and economic injury is up until February eighteenth of next year.
Do you have any more correspondence? I, I was contacted by the teacher from the eighth graders from Coeva, and they're planning to do a visit to the town hall. They wanna do, they're gonna walk or take a bus. And the intention is so they, the kids can realize and see what town officials and serving for the town looks like. So we're gonna make a mock-up of a dog hearing and maybe a small agenda that we proceed so they can get a little feeling of it, then a small tour. So if you guys are available, if you or you are available, it's next Tuesday, Thursday at eleven. I leave, I'll send you the right information.
That's the day of our town meeting?
Yeah. This is in the morning, and.
It's gonna be, kinda be a hard day to do because a lot of the reporters are gonna prepare the meeting. Our clerk.
Well, their main point is gonna come here and sit and pretend like doing a meeting. It's more like, the teacher wants to, you know, have them to feel like what it's like to have an open meeting and have a dog hearing. He's, he's building like all this scenario, and the kids, they will come prepared to discuss things.
So they gotta hold the hearing, or are we gonna hold the hearing?
They.
So the kids are gonna actually do the hearing?
Yes.
No?
Yeah, it's good.
Okay. Lot of clock?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, can you just let us know firmly on that?
I'll confirm the time.
I'd like to attend it.
Yeah. Anybody can be here, you and Mister Ferrara as well, if you'd love to have the opportunity. By the way, my daughter is in eighth grade.
Then do I need to do a meeting notice?
You would have to post it saying that I will be here.
Yeah, but you're not making any, we're not making any decisions, though. You're gonna sit in the audience and just watch.
Yeah.
So you don't mean.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, you know, we're not meeting, we're not, yeah, we're not deciding any, we're not discussing town policy or anything.
All right.
You agree, sir? Yes, I will.
Okay. You could do a fake posting for the dog hearing.
That's what I figured.
Don't put it up, sorry, but you just maybe put it on the door here, you know?
And then he wanted to do old business, new business.
Yeah, give him a little agenda.
Make sure you put the pledge allegiance on there.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I believe the intentions of the teacher is to, you know, plant that seed so they, when they grow up, they can participate here and not just look like, you know, this is a closed group that nobody can come in.
It's an intro to local government.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I know it's late, but those kids could come to one of our meetings sometime. I know, you know, it's six o'clock or whatever, but if they wanted to come even for half an hour just to see what this. Or even like Planning Board, Conservation, like that might be a good.
I'll extend invitation. I just think because it's the end of the year, they just wanna get done with it in the school year end.
Yeah, school year end.
This is their last.
So maybe next year.
He says that they have two classes, you know, two periods together on that last day of school, but they're gonna take a little bus, come over here and do it.
Is it a part of a civics class or something?
It is a civics. Yeah, with Mister Joe Silverton.
Okay.
Okay. So now that we are done with correspondence, we're gonna go into comments and concerns. Do you guys have any comments or concerns?
I'll just say Memorial Day Parade was awesome. Michelle did a really great job.
She did.
Probably been the best Memorial Day in a while. I mean, it was a lot for one person to take on, and she did a great job.
She did amazing job. I concur with you on that. It just, it was very impressive to see, you know. It's hard because it's her first time doing it, but she definitely did a really good job. And then being at the Eagles Club afterwards, that was a really good time. She prepared a lot of food, had a lot of food there, and it all went fast.
Yeah.
What was it, a hundred hamburgers and a hundred hot dogs and chicken wings and everything, and all the food was gone.
I was in line and everything was gone already.
Her takeaway, she had a couple of takeaways. When she's starting to start at the bottom of St. Paul's because walking up that hill is a killer, so she's gonna start at the top and then go from there so everybody doesn't have to walk up.
Well, I think we start there as so the, so we can recognize the fire chiefs going up the hill. Because it's fire chiefs along, along the hill, so that's why we start there. Because then that's when Chief La Boy, that was the recognition of the fire chiefs and the firefighters lost.
Well, then we'll start partway up the hill then. And then the other thing she said that she, she definitely needed to get more food.
Yeah.
Right? Anything else?
I, I think it would be great if, if, you know, start ahead of the time and just not, just let her do all everything and, you know, kinda like organize and help her like.
Well, hopefully we will have a veterans council next year.
You know, like, do, do have cars in the parade as well, you know? Even if it, if it rains, it would be nice that the bus that brings the band follows in the back, the parade, because if it starts raining, they can put the instruments back there.
And they could still play.
Years past, they used to have trailers, right? They would have.
Oh, like a float.
Like a float type thing. And we could probably do something like that where.
We just need.
Expanding it more, but we put it out much more. You know, and plenty of time for people to be able to put something out there with a patriotic theme. We would have to indicate what, what the theme of the parade is for, for Memorial Day, Memorial Day related.
Yeah.
So.
Sounds good. So I, do you have any comments or concerns? Or any other?
No.
I'm good. I have a comment. Town administrator forgot to mention that, you know, myself, I took all twenty-two Northeast I T courses in an afternoon.
Thank you. Good job.
It was fun. It was like watching a series. There was some science fiction involved, but I, I got a hundred points on each one.
Very good.
I encourage all the town employees to get them their fun, and, you know, there's some good background knowledge there that, you know, it could help.
I'll switch it over here soon.
Pretty soon, yeah.
July one. July one.
But there'll still be, there'll still be exams, monthly tests, you know, monthly. Yeah, they'll do the same. I just never too. And then, Jim, the administrator said you have to.
Okay.
Well, I'd sit down one afternoon. Couple hours, I was done. Not a big deal. Very interesting. Okay. Next is, our next meeting?
No comments or concerns.
Oh, yes, I forgot about it. Do we have any comments or concerns in the public?
Yes, Joe. How are you? You gotta talk about D-Day, right? Joe Condrat, resident. Well, I did some research because my father was in one of the first waiters onto Utah Beach. Got to find out George Chapdaling from West Warren was also in that unit. And after the war, he started Chapdaling Drugstore, which was in West Warren until the nineteen-seventies. And I was looking at how many gold stars were handed out in Oregon. Eighteen gold stars. The last Sunday in September is Gold Star Flag Day. Now, a three-by-five flag that you can fly on any flagpole, if we could get one and hang it in the gazebo downtown for that last weekend of September, just to honor these people. There were eighteen of them in this town. Most of them were Army Air Corps, B-24 Liberators, B-17 Bombers. There were a couple of naval deaths down in the Java Sea. Most of these people did not come home. They're buried in American cemeteries overseas. But it would be nice if we could just put up a gold star flag in the gazebo to recognize the loss in this town of these eighteen people. And I thought that was terrible until I found out about the Bedford Boys. Bedford, Virginia has a population of seventeen-hundred people, less than us. They lost theirs on Omaha Beach. Twenty soldiers within the first hour, all from Bedford, Virginia. That had to have been devastating. But it's just food for thought. Thank you very much, Mister Condrat.
Yeah, thank you for doing all the investigation. Go ahead, David.
So today is D-Day, eighty years ago today, and many men and women that served during that conflict with great honor. And I didn't realize how many people in our own community that we've lost during D-Day in World War Two. I think this is something we should probably look into, and if we don't already have something set up for memorial for these veterans, we were naming them, we should probably see if we could do something. We could do like, like a monument in one of our, our areas and have, have like a World War Two monument for them. Because they, a lot of people in just our small community, we should be able to recognize it that.
I agree. Wouldn't some of these names be on the, there's a monument in Veterans Park, right? The colors, maybe up to Ibracur or Coe.
Yeah, but you see, the thing is, the last Sunday in September is Gold Star Flag Day. And, you know, it'd be nice if we could get a gold star flag, a regular three-by-five, and hang it up inside the gazebo for that last weekend.
So Michelle might be the one to do. I would talk to Michelle.
Well, we'd actually fly under the American flag. So when you raise the American flag, you would raise it under that in respect. And we could probably get a gold star flag from Michelle, she might have access to them. And if we get that, we could put that up underneath there. I think we could put that, that'd be a nice sign.
Yeah. I think we're good.
But it shouldn't just be put up in the gazebo, it should be on the pole.
So who can be in charge of making this happen?
What, that's not saying Michelle, she's a veteran agent?
Yeah, but from this room to follow up and then make that happen, I think Karen either has a question or she's volunteering. Karen's volunteering.
Okay? That'd be great, and you have all our support, you two guys, and we'll make this happen.
You okay?
Yep.
You seem emotional about this.
No.
You good?
Yeah. It's an awesome thing.
Anything else in the public or in Zoom, man?
Yes, sir.
Ray Capaco, member of the Finance Committee and the Capital Planning Committee. I had just a very brief statement, and I'm gonna expand on it a little bit. I was gonna say the idea to acquire the train station is commendable. I said it in public forums. I've said it in public forums multiple times now. I'm gonna change that statement after what I heard tonight. The idea to acquire the train station now, I feel, is detestable. I cannot believe I heard this board say that they're ready to go to an eminent domain to take a private parcel that they don't need. Eminent domain is meant to be for public utilizations that are necessary or deemed to be necessary, such as transportation routes, et cetera. I don't need to debate that now or here to go into that, but I just found that. I found that, I was aghast when I heard you guys talking about that. While it would be nice for the town to own that property, that's all it is. It's nice. I'm on record for saying I support the town owning that property, but not the way you're going about it now. In other words, it's a want. You want it, you want it, I don't believe the town does, we'll see what happens Thursday. There's no need for the town to obtain that property, there's no need. There's good ideas about it, there's good vision about it, I appreciate all that, but that is fundamentally different from the town needing it. There's two and a half million dollars of other capital requests pending that are indisputable needs. We need that. If we had two and a half million dollars right now that we could spend, we could spend it all right now, and none of it would be fluff. Getting that property is fluff, it's nice fluff, but it's fluff. I'm just aghast that you guys would so readily and easily talk about engaging in further legal. The town is already engaged in too many legal things. You're willing to go contrary to the legal opinion that our town administrator got for you, saying that, don't pursue this PNS until you get the, if that real estate agent is actually contractually still tied, if, I'm saying it backwards, if Mr. Cat is still legally under that realtor's contract, he says he's not, but she says he is. How do you know? You want it to not be so, because that gets her out of the way. You should investigate, find out what's going on before you proceed with it. Now, I know you deferred it till Thursday, that's good at least. Your willingness to involve legal for a want is detestable. I don't mean to be so critical, I like working with you guys individually, I don't mean to be the curmudgeon here. But think what you're doing, you're gonna burn a lot of goodwill if you push this the way you're pushing it. If I was the head of a department who made a capital request and didn't, wasn't able to get any this year, and I find out you're gonna spend $250,000 as a start, that's minimum entry level to play the game, $250,000. You gotta maintain that place, you've got to ensure it, you've got to refurb it, you don't even know what it's gonna cost to refurb. Grants would be great, they're unreliable, they're not guaranteed. You can't go into this thinking you're gonna get grants, unless you know, unless there's a, but you can't know that you have a grant right now. What the state gives, they can take away just as readily. You might think you have something all lined up, and at the last hour, they pull the rug out, nope, crisis in the financing, we can't do this grants, we gotta cancel them. So don't depend on grants, that is not the way to run a business or a town. I have a lot more to say, it'll probably all come out at town meeting, but you are mistaken about this. That's all I'm gonna say at this time.
Thank you, sir.
Please consider what you're doing, you're absolutely entitled to do what you want to. But the way you're going about it is not good. You're gonna force by eminent domain to take that property? I'm appalled. If you felt you needed a, I'm gonna say more. If you felt you needed six acres for a public safety complex, how would it be different if you came to me and said, Ray, we love your place, we need those six acres for a public?
Safety.
Safety place, thank you, Derek. You could do that, how would it be different? At least you could make the case that you need a public safety complex, we do need that. If I was the police chief and I found out you're willing to spend, spend $250,000 on a, on a building that needs to be refurbished in order to be usable for concessions and bathrooms, and you're still keeping them in a condemned building? I don't understand why he wouldn't be livid. Maybe he is, but he just won't do it because politeness demands that he can't. Think about what you're doing. Every dollar you spend is not your money, it's not, the town doesn't have a penny. Even if they earn on investments, the only reason they can earn on investments is because they had the investment money to earn interest. The town still didn't, the investment money came from the taxpayers. Every dollar you spend, you should be asking yourself, is this good for the town, does the town need it? When the town gets to the point, which it never will, where we have luxury available to us, then you can take and spend it on unnecessary buildings and properties.
Thank you, Ray.
You're welcome. Someone has to say it, cause you're not hearing it from anyone else, apparently. Sorry, I'm being so cantankerous about it, but it really irks.
No, no, you're good, you're good. We listen to you.
And I appreciate that, and I think you do. And I, I, I hope you take it seriously. Listen, it's not, thankfully, it's not up to you guys, and thankfully, it's not up to me. We'll make our arguments at town meeting, and we'll see where it goes from there.
Do we have any other concerns or comments from the public?
I kinda have to agree with Ray. I can't see buying a piece of property that's a want when you actually have money that you need to spend in other places. Budget that we passed when we went through Capital Planning, we had to say yea and nay to certain things, okay? Because of the money situation. You need to spend the money on certain things that need to be used that are a necessity for the town, not a want. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dan.
Just to bring it back, something positive, I don't like to end on such, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
It's okay.
This floor is yours.
It's, it's a good idea, I like it. The town should have that property, but it's just not time. No one's gonna buy that property. No one's gonna buy that property. We should plan for it and look forward to getting it in the future. In the meantime, you can go ahead with all your plans to redesign the common, et cetera, et cetera.
There is, there is a real estate sign out there, by the way, and it does have Amanda Pierce's name on it.
Yeah, the realtors operate under a code of conduct. I would take her word way more before I would take Mr. Cat's, and I don't, that's not a disparagement to Mr. Cat. But, but what, he's not under any code of conduct. If she's not really representing that property, and she says she is, she can get her license pulled. She's gonna risk her license by falsely representing herself? You should be listening to her before you listen to him. I'm not saying you take her word, you find out, though. And what motive does he have to say anything other than, yeah, I wanna get every penny I can out of this, and if I can save three or six percent on a realtor broker commission, I'll take that? All right, I keep saying, that's all I'm gonna say, and I keep going.
No worries.
Thanks, I appreciate the chance to speak.
You have all the rights to speak, and we listen to you. Thank you, Ray, and Dan. Anybody on Zoom?
No.
Nope? Okay, next is our, our next meeting. We have a pre-meeting at six for the special town meeting and in the annual town meeting at the Middle High School auditorium on Thursday, June 13, 2024, at 6:30 PM.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a second.
Second?
All in favor?
David DuFrenzai?
Richard Harker, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye, we are to adjourn.
We're done, guys.
What a word.